A meeting to order from Monday, December 6, 2021, 6:30 PM, City Council Room. All members of the City Council are present, others including James Johnson, our clerk treasurer, and Laura Dogan, our city manager. The next item is to approve the minutes of November 15, 2021. And I would entertain a motion.
So what?
Motion made by Mr. Vaschan. Is there a second?
Second.
Segmented by Mr. Chabernow. Discussion on the minutes? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. The next item is comments by members of the public. Ann Shirillo, budget of everything to be voted on by council.
I've asked for this before. But the water and sewer budget is never presented to you at this time and is never, ever voted on by you. This year, I expect, because of COVID, you will be getting extra monies for the city for infrastructure with respect to water and sewerage. It's really important that you don't just give up. You are also sitting, not only as City Council, but you are in charge of water and sewerage. And you should be looking at that budget and not just giving up all your power and all of your representation of us to one person, but rather deciding how water should be budgeted. I'm not saying that it's done wrong. I'm just saying you should in advance decide what that budget should be. And so at the end of all of the issues that you're going to be dealing with, just decide on the water and sewerage budget as well. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And we'll move on. The next item is the USDA CF grant application for the fire department. We have Mike Welch joining us remotely. And we have our fire chief who will give us a brief overview.
Okay. Good evening, everyone. Thank you. If you remember, last year, we applied for this grant, and unfortunately, we weren't awarded it. So with Mike's help, trying to apply for it again. It's basically all of last year's, plus we added a few more things. The radio for our proposed new truck this year, some wireless communications for within the vehicle, and the radio itself for the new vehicle if we do get it. What this does is allow us to upgrade our old equipment and increase the number of units in our portable fleet so that every firefighter on the fire ground will have a radio, something that my predecessors didn't necessarily believe in. And it is actually part of the NFPA safety program that every firefighter have two-way communications. In case something happens to them, they can radio back to command and we can confirm that something has happened to them. The total project cost is about $50,511. It is a 55-45 grant match on us. So that's $27,781 from the grant and $22,730 from us. We have $15,000 that we set aside from last year that we had budgeted for the grant. And the balance, $7,000, will come out of my operating budget because if we do get this, we won't have to be buying new equipment or repairing old equipment. So that's where the funding will come from. I'm a strong believer that every firefighter on the fire ground needs to have two-way communications. It's really easy for someone to get separated inside or separated outside. You know, middle of the night, middle of winter, icy grounds, somebody walks around the backside of the building, slips, falls, somebody doesn't know about it. They should have the ability to be able to call for help. It's a big thing for me. So we're asking for 16 portable radios for that purpose.
Can I ask a question?
Yes, go ahead.
So in a typical fire response, how many individuals may not have a radio?
Right now, the only people that have radios, city radios, are my officers. And then there are a few people that have purchased their own, which I don't think they should have to do. We have situations where there are times when on a large working fire, we have teams actually operating where somebody doesn't have a, you know, that team doesn't have a radio because there doesn't have to be an officer with them at that particular time. The thing of it is, is we try to make sure that there is a radio with every working team. But if somebody gets separated from that team, they should be able to reach out for help.
Other questions from council members?
How long do these radios usually last before they make?
The bulk of my radios are over 15 years old already. And what happens is they start getting weaker. So, and portable radios are only line-of-sight communications. So if they get weaker in power, like I can't talk to Pine Hill from the station because of curvature of the hill and so forth. So by getting the newer radios, they're a little bit more powerful, they're newer technology. By putting the repeaters in my car and one in one of the trucks, it allows us to communicate better and more reliably. Unfortunately, in the Northeast Kingdom, even in the city, there's dead zones. Be it terrain, be it granite, be it all sorts of, there's dead zones. So by doing what we're doing, we're trying to make sure that we can communicate at all times to keep everybody safe.
Other questions from council members? Mike Welch was on the call. Do you have anything you'd like to add at all?
Nothing to add, Mr. Mayor. The chief did an excellent job explaining the program. I'm happy to answer any questions about the grant if members of the council have any.
Anybody have any questions for Mr. Welch? No? Then I guess at this time, we would need a motion to approve the application for the grant. And then there's a resolution that we all have to sign. And once again, the grant application amount is $27,781, a 45% match by the city of Newport, which is $22,730, for a total of $50,511. And so we would need a motion.
I'm moved.
I guess just here.
So I'm moved to approve the USDA CF grant application for the fire department for total.
The total was $50,000.
For a total of $50,511, to be offset by grants that's received.
A motion has been made. Is there a second?
Second.
Made by Ms. Patterson, segmented by Mr. Wilson. Discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. And we'll just sign this and we'll give this.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Thanks, town.
I'll be back.
Mr. Mayor?
Basically, the resolution that was signed basically says the Newport City Council, at their meeting held on Monday, December 6, 2021, by a majority vote of the council members, authorized City Manager Laura Dogan to submit and sign any and all forms relevant to the submission and award of up to $27,781 from the USDA Community Facilities Grant Application for upgrades to the fire department portable radios, vehicle repeaters, and wireless communication systems for engine air and airboat. Total estimated project cost, $50,511. The required $22,730 match will come from the fire department operating budget and reserve funds allocated for fire department grant match. That's the resolution that we all signed it. So let me.
Mr. Mayor, the chief's vision with the radios here with the firefighters at all times or only during fire ground?
Yes. Officers carrying with them all the time. Firefighters will pick them up at the station and then carry them on the fire.
So they would, basically, radios would live with the firefighter until he or she is no longer on the department potentially?
Officers carry them with them.
Yep.
But firefighters will pick them up at the station, go to the call, and then return them to the station.
Okay, so they won't live with them?
I think it just goes back to the city manager.
I have to make a copy for Jim to record.
Okay, moving on. Thank you, Mike. Moving on. The next item is errors and omissions memo. This is pretty standard. It's just basically a correction to the tax assess grant list. It's a sale of a property and there was a couple errors that are being corrected. And this has to get submitted to the state. And the memo from the assessor is pretty explanatory. Questions from council members on this? We would need a motion to approve the errors and omissions statement, Laflamme to Allard. The closing occurred on August 2, 2021. And this is a correction. So we just need a motion to approve it.
Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Chabernow?
I'll make the motion that we approve the errors and omissions statement, Laflamme to Allard, the closing date of August 2, 2021.
Motion made by Mr. Chabernow. Is there a second?
Second.
Segmented by Mr. Vaschan. Discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. I'm going to give this to you because that's the original.
Thank you.
The next item is the 2022 City Council regular meeting schedule. You have the schedule, or I had it. I know I didn't here.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. I think there was a place for the city council to sign.
Oops, did we not sign that? I got ahead of myself.
That's okay. And I think there's a place for the town clerk to sign as well.
Yes, that's true because we have to authorize it through the tax department. You're right. I got ahead of myself.
That's okay. Thank you.
And today is December 6.
Mr. Mayor, can I see the calendar or can you display it? Thank you.
I'm trying to find my copy. I knew I had it here just a second ago.
Everything's on the website. To see it. Thank you.
Go ahead. Okay. All right. Now we're going to confirm the 2022 City Council regular meeting schedule. And we had a copy of the calendar provided to us. When I initially got it, I found the one mistake or one that we, it was corrected on it. And so these are the dates for the upcoming year. Any questions from council members?
I have a question.
Let us finish discussing, please.
Fine.
There's not a motion yet either.
Fine.
Any, anything on this? Then we would need a motion to approve the 2022 City Council schedule.
Mr. Mayor, I make the motion we accept the 2022 regular City Council meeting schedule.
Motion's been made. Is there a second?
All second.
Made by Mr. Wilson, segmented by Mr. Wilson, segmented by Mr. Chabernow. Discussion from council members. The only thing that I would add to this calendar is we're required, unless there's a holiday, to meet the first Monday of the month per the city charter. The second meeting of the month is optional, but we usually try to meet twice a month as a general rule of thumb for the City Council.
Mr. Mayor, does anyone know when Martin Luther King Day falls in January?
This does not conflict with that date.
I think it's the 17th.
This does not conflict with Martin Luther King Day.
Fine.
I'm just going to look it up right now on my computer. You're right. Yes. Okay, so we have a motion and a second. Just any other discussion? Then all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Motion carries. Moving on. The next item is the budget review. We're going to be reviewing the admin, fire department, and police department. What would you like me to put on my screen to share for the people who are connected online?
You can go to our website and go, scroll to the bottom of the page.
Are you going to do the budget recap?
Yep.
Okay, I have that up there.
Do you have the memo? The memo is what's on the screen right here. Because we might as well start with that.
Yes. Okay, let me share my screen.
Okay. I'm just going to put this away so we don't get too confused. So one of the first things that I want to remind everybody is the spreadsheet that we've used is the same one that we've used since I've been here. And we keep growing it. We keep refining it. There is a lot of cells behind each, a lot of formulas behind each cell. So if you do see an error, we'd like to know about it. We've combed through it. We feel like it's a confident budget. But again, if you see something, as they say, say something to us because it's so a lot of work. But the first thing I want to start with, and actually, why don't you hand me the, or turn the microphone towards me so the folks can hear me. There you go. Nice. So before I pull up the budget sheets itself, I just wanted to bring everybody's attention to the memo.
Laura, I think you've got to put it right up somehow. It's not a mic that, it's not a mic with distance, I think. It's one that has to be up close.
Going to do the best I can. Let's see. Becky's telling me whether or not she can hear me. Okay, she said she can't hear the audience. So if the audience speaks, we'll turn, we'll share the microphone. So now we're going to start. So what I did with our memo this year was tried to answer the questions that Mrs. Shirillo has raised at previous meetings so that it would be in writing. And that I tried to make it clear in an effort for this to be resourceful. Basically, the overall budget is up by $40,433.86 from last year's budget. That's the amount to be raised by taxes. I like to remind the folks that I'm the one who's also the delinquent tax collector. So this is made with respect to some of the burdens that I hear and the real-life stories that I hear from our taxpayers. And I have immense respect for everybody's individual situations. I talk about the RCDI grant, Rural Communities Development Initiative. And for folks who don't know, Mike Welch, who was on the meeting before, is a consultant that we use with Northern Communities Investment Corporation. He works as our grant writer. And having him and his team on board take the responsibility to write the grants and when they're awarded, they assist us with the accountability is an incredible service that we get. As you know, that's a three-year grant. It started in 2018. It expires in 2022 because we were able to get a one-year extension as a result of COVID. So the questions that, one of the questions was exactly how much have we been reimbursed for this year? So in FY 2021, two grants were completed and funds were reimbursed. Remember that the bulk of the grants that we apply for are drawdown grants. That means that we have to pay for them and show our invoices and canceled checks when we request our drawdown. Drawdown and reimbursement are used interchangeably. So here you have it. The land record digitization grant was completed. We received a check of $20,573 as reimbursement. We do have a monthly fee now from the vendor who is the server for the land records and we pay approximately $425 a month for that service. The EV car charging station was completed and a grant amount of $18,902.2 was reimbursed. We contributed $1,968.75 to that project cost. And as I mentioned, if it was not for these grants, we probably would not have gone to the effort to do the work without the grant. It helps advance the city and it provides a relief to get the work done to the taxpayer. The other questions that have come up is what's happening in our police department with grants? As you know, we do not budget revenue items in our police budget because none of these grants are guaranteed. But we still have to pay the same amount of staff, whether we have a grant or not. We've been doing this for the past three or four years. It comes with the blessing of our auditor. They understand exactly what we're doing. Funds that are not expended go into the restricted budget that's in place. So we save those funds. We don't lose those funds. We put them towards next year's budget. This is the amounts that have been received for the last grant year, which ended on June 30. That's FY 1920. We're now in the grant year of 2021, 22, and we're building grant 2223 because our fiscal year starts July 1. That paragraph basically says what I've just explained. And then I talk about the difference with our public works taking over the parks facilities. We're still learning a lot. We'll probably have a better handle on that after we've gone through one full cycle. We started taking over the parks facilities in January. So we've had quite an adjustment over this past year. But you'll see facilities maintenance, which has been a priority of the council since I've been here, is now coming into a much more efficient place. So we're pleased to see that. We share in the council's interest in seeing our facilities in a very nice state for the community to enjoy. We also are paying closer attention to our five-year capital program. Our five-year capital program will be updated starting early next year. We'll start to make presentations to the City Council. Last year, it was approved in May and we thought that was a good timeline to go through our operational budget, then to shift gears and go into our five-year budget, which aligns with the waterfront and downtown master plan in addition to the public works areas of priority, which are not inexpensive because you're talking about improving water, sewer, and roads. So when I was speaking to my colleagues throughout the state about their budgeting process, we all thought it was kind of interesting that we all are seeing the same trends this year, basically as a result of COVID. And there are no financial programs available to assist workers anymore since that expired. So our, where we have seen the impacts is supply chain delays, higher expenses, and we lose staff on occasion, particularly when the schools are closed, as we've all experienced. We want to be very respectful about people's situations so they're able to use their sick leave or FMLA or PFLA. So with that, I am now prepared to go into our budget. So all of this is on our website. The memo's on the website and each page of the budget is on our website. If the council decides to make changes to the budget, when we input the budget, it may take a few minutes, but the budget sheets that are showing on our website will update. I'm pleased about that because it makes it a very nice tool. We're still basing the grant list conservatively. We find that it's much better to be pleasantly surprised in late August when it's time to actually set the tax rate. So what you have here is the most conservative approach that we could take, which basically means we're aiming low on our revenue and we're aiming high on our expenses so that there's no surprises to the taxpayer. If anything, this amount or this amount right here. If we should all live and be well, could potentially decrease just a little bit between now and August, depending upon what happens with our grant list. So. Well, let me just go back to the recap page. When you look at this budget, you're going to see that this is a conclusion of each department that we have. Tonight, we're going to talk about the administration, the police, and the fire department. And then at our next meeting, we're going to talk about public works, recreation, and what we call other, which is also our capital expenses. Then City Council will have time to ponder, ask any questions, make any adjustments. And by pure coincidence, for the past, I think, four budgets in a row, the City Council has been able to approve the budget the first Monday in January. And at that point, it becomes the City Council's budget. And then we have some more work to do. There'll be an informational meeting in February. And then this year, town meeting is early. So make a mental note that town meeting is on March 1 this year. So our informational meeting is scaled to reflect that date. It's a little bit different. And I think that hopefully provides a good introduction into how this works and how we got all of these numbers. So again, the next page is revenue. And these numbers will reflect an educated guess about what we believe we will be receiving in these funds based on past years. And again, we're projecting forward throughout the entire budget. If we know of a number, we've put that actual number in the budget. Some numbers are guesses. Some numbers are guesses, educated guesses based on past trends. Our pilot, for example, is in the process of being negotiated, and I don't have a final result on that yet. But as soon as I do, for example, we'll be able to input a new number there. Again, license and fees. I don't know, Jim, this makes total sense to me. I don't know if you have anything to offer?
No, it's all based on last year, and what happened during COVID. But still, it's gonna happen again this year. It's pretty, it's pretty much the same from year to year.
I'm just scrolling down, hoping people have enough time to see it. Because I, as Jim says, it's based on previous years, so I'm not sure if any of the council members has any questions or anything you want to point out.
Any questions from council members on the revenue side? You are anticipating, I know we're not talking about rec tonight, but you are anticipating a big jump with the border being open again.
I would think so. You know, our gas, when we get to that, does it have here gasoline sales? Look at what we did. And look at what we normally do. So yeah, that's an area where we took a direct hit. And that's an indicator of it. So the numbers really, you know, they reflect our best educated guess about what we know and what we've experienced. So I'll continue on to the admin. The admin office represents the city manager's office, the budget for the city council, delinquent tax collection, elections, the city clerk and treasurer, our audit, tax listings, I said, city clerk, city attorney, planning and zoning, and of course, the upkeep of this building, our reappraisals, and our totals. So let me just back up again. Again, all of this is on our website. Folks who want to take it home and, or click on our website and take the look. And if there was ever something that was level funded but for those expenses that we can't control, such as social security, retirement, health insurance, workman's comp, we've left everything as close to what it was last year as we could. And again, we're basing it on a very off-year. Some of the work we just weren't able to get to as a direct result of COVID, and you're gonna see that theme throughout this budget, whether it's us talking about what we wanted to get done administratively, or you'll notice it particularly in the public works budget when we get there. And I think, Jim, you're expecting three elections?
Yeah, FY is up so much. Three elections next year, instead of a one, no one, any odd years. Basically, we'd increase on that. Next year, it'll be a drop in it.
So again, I'm just scrolling slowly down. I don't want to take up too much airspace, so if folks on the council have something in particular they'd like to ask, and again, with deference to how your process and your
The treasurer's office, you know, it's only increased one point six percent. That's basically because those already retired, they had over 25 years, and that was the person. That's basically the difference.
I'm just scrolling. I want to do this in a way that makes sense for folks.
Any questions from anyone yet?
On the municipal building one. There was a, uh, there was something that just doubled over a period of a year. Yeah, I lost where it was.
Sorry, I'm looking at it right here, and I'm just comparing the numbers to see if I can help you identify it.
Municipal building. Well, oil, yeah, that's up even anticipated, five thousand, that's almost double. But that wasn't the one I was looking at.
That salary is our custodian?
No, down further, something to do with health insurance.
Health insurance?
Yeah, right here.
Yeah, that is a big number.
Actual for 21, '22 budget, well, we had zero, but now, actual is two thousand, eighty-eight.
Right.
But now we're saying eight thousand, two hundred dollars.
That is a reflection of the employee who now holds that position. So before, you had a person who was a different family structure?
Okay. All right. That was the one I had there.
And that brings us to the bottom of administration. So if there's no questions on administration, I'm happy to move to fire department.
We're doing the presentation. I'm running this like I did last year, where the council has presented the budget, then we'll open up the questions at the end of the evening.
We were supposed to be allowed to question after each section, is what you said last year. After each presenter, and we were supposed to be allowed to question that section, so that it would be in context of what you just were talking about.
Okay. All right.
I just have one question about the cost of the annual report. It seemed that the cost of the annual report actually seemed to be about thirteen thousand dollars, and you're proposing a thirty-five thousand dollar cost for the annual budget, which would be about three times as much. Why has the cost of the annual report gone up by three times? If I'm correct.
Well, I think some of that, if you notice on the printing last year was three thousand, this year it's five hundred. I think some of that printing is in the annual report, is in there.
Well, it went up a hundred and sixty-nine percent change. I'm sorry, so it went up from thirteen hundred to thirty-five hundred.
Yeah, well, I'm saying that last year, if you look at the printing part of the annual report, it was five thousand last year, and we budgeted five hundred. Some of that is in the annual report, where it should be.
It's also part of the audit.
So take from one and put it in. You may not even know it exactly, but lower than thirty-five hundred.
Okay.
Shall we move on to fire department?
Then you call it up for the person online. Okay. And we have the fire chief, who's here to present his budget.
Mine's really quite simple. I'm going out a little bit. So nothing major has changed. We are still in the process of redefining some of the numbers. That's why some of them are skewed differently. We're doing a lot of maintenance, and a lot of repairs, and a lot of things of that nature that needed to be done, so we're trying to stay within our overall budget. But if we're going over in maintenance and repairs, I'm trying not to spend it on equipment and things of that nature. That's why some categories, I'm not spending as much as we had budgeted, but I'm leaving it the same, because we will be, when we get these things ironed out. As you know, we put the new floor in, we redid the meeting room, we added the whole racking system in the station. This year, we did the whole furnace. We're trying to maintain our facilities, so that continues for a long period of time. Some of this stuff probably could have been done a long time ago, and the building's, what, twenty-two or three years old, so it's starting to reach the point where it needs stuff.
Yeah, it was built in nineteen ninety-eight, dedicated in nineteen ninety-eight.
So that's why you'll see some numbers there are higher in the actuals than what we had. And then other ones are lower, because we just, we didn't, I didn't spend the money, because I knew I needed it somewhere else. My goal was, at the end of the year, to stay below what we had budgeted. Actually, last year, because we did the floor so late in the season, I actually left about four thousand dollars on the table, because I wanted it there in case we needed it, and we didn't. So I think the overall is, we're down one point one eight percent. And the big reason for that is, like I told the mayor earlier, before you all got here, I joined the old people's club this year, so I qualify for medic here, so you guys saved a ton of money on my health insurance.
Was the roof repaired the last budget year?
Yeah, I think it was two years ago, I think. So in the last three years, basically, we put in the roof on, we did the floor and the station, we redid the meeting room, I put a new furnace in there. Hopefully, next, this winter, we're gonna repaint the office and get that out to the 21st century.
And that was a metal, a standing seam put in, so that's gearing. Supposed to last fifty years or more.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, absolutely.
This budget allows you to provide the level of service that the community has become accustomed to.
Yeah, absolutely. As we spoke last year, my goal with my budgets, and the way I want to maintain the department, is that we get to a position where we are doing things on a regular basis, as opposed to major purchases all the time, upgrading things as we're going along. That's why we're in the situation we were last year with the air packs. We had to replace the whole fleet, because the whole fleet went out of date at one time, had to spend a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. That's why we are where we are with the radios. Nothing was done. It's good enough, it works. So we have to do the whole thing at one time, so we could get it up to a level of safety for the department, and ultimately, for the community. I've been doing this for thirty-four years, I've been involved with this department, and we have become accustomed to maintaining a certain level of standard of operation. And in order to be able to continue that, everything changes. The world changes, equipment changes, standards change, and we need to be able to stay up with it, and do it on a regular basis, instead of waiting until all of a sudden, we have to do things. Because right now, I'm doing things because we have to do them. And my goal in my ten years is to get it to where we are planning, and we are projecting, and we are doing things on a planned basis, instead of on a total reactionary basis.
Questions for John? Well, because of the, our department is well-trained, we have the equipment, they do the practice, I guess, well, you know, I use pollen grain, you practice there each year. Because of all that, it lowers our, they call it the ISO rating, correct?
Yes, ISO.
Which helps everyone's fire insurance in the city.
ISO rating is a, the ISO standard, they come in and they rate the city, and it has to do with public works, water supply, equipment, training, manpower, response. I mean, they go through the whole thing, and you come up with a number one through 10, one being the best. And I don't think there's 10 category ones in the country. The lowest you can get is a 10, doesn't mean you're bad, it just means you don't meet the standards. And I think we're hovering right about a 4.2 right now. We're about as low a number as you can get as a call department, without becoming a career department. So our training levels, our participation is up, our response capability is up, we have an excellent water system, and...
And you have a good, what I say, a good mix of volunteers, from the seasoned to new.
We do, we do.
And that's what I was quite impressed with when I went to your, one of your meetings for training, we were training recruits, and I was impressed with the people who were interested in joining the fire department, you know, at the younger level, because you read too often in the country, departments are struggling to get recruits.
We all are. I would love to be able to pick up another half a dozen, just because of the fact that all my guys work. And you never know from hour to hour where they're gonna be, and it's a problem nationwide in the volunteer service. But it is becoming more and more time necessary. I mean, the amount of hours that my guys put in on any given year is rather large, I mean, just in training. I would say my guys average between, on the low side, forty, on the high side, eighty to a hundred hours a year, on top of their calls, on top of their meetings, and on top of, just the plain outreach stuff.
And working full-time?
And working full-time jobs. And, I mean, fire the other night, we had fourteen guys show up, and, which, you know, is awesome. We had twelve or thirteen pulling grain fire. You know, we have a roster of twenty-four, we have some elder statements. We have guys on the department from fifty-two years, and I now have five juniors that are age fifteen and sixteen. And they all work and train together. And I think that's a pretty awesome statement on the quality of individuals that we have, and their commitment to the community, and their willingness to do the job.
Great. Anything for John? Anyone? No? Okay, we'll move on. Thank you, John.
Thank you.
Next, we have the police department. We have a police chief, Travis Brigham, to do his presentation.
Good evening, everyone.
So again, I touched on the police department budget in the memo, and I can scroll down so you can just get a general sense of things, but you'll notice all the zeros. I just want to check. Oh, yeah, the resource officer is new this year, so that's why you're seeing a big jump here.
Yeah, so that's under the revenue section? Yeah, so the two things there was the resource officer, and then the, just point your attention to the dispatch income that's up to eighty-seven. So able to bring in a couple more agencies with our dispatch, so that's why that number's Yeah, and again, tried to put together, obviously, a reasonable budget that was, you know, presentable to everybody. So starting with the admin, everything's pretty straightforward here. I don't know if you guys had any questions on anything under the admin part of it? Uh, so going down into the police patrol, you'll see some, some of these numbers at the gate there, the minus fourteen, minus twenty-two percent, those are based on some newly hired officers, so that's why the holiday and vacation pay have dropped down. The salary increase you see says seven and a half percent. So, just to kinda hit on that real quick is their contract for the one that they're currently under, they get a three percent increase June thirtieth. So, the new budget year starts July one, so assuming that they're gonna have another contract with possibly a three percent, we added that in there. So, that's how that number's up to seven, uh, seven and a half percent. So, just wanted to touch on that for you guys. Operating supplies, I mean, just little stuff like that. Tried to go on the actuals from the last previous year, so we dropped that down a little bit under there. Uh, you know, obviously, some of that stuff with the supply and demand from COVID, like it's hard to, it's just kinda doing our best guess on some of those little items. The training, I, I tried to keep the training at the same as it was last year. You'll notice that there obviously was a deficient between what we were able to spend and what we had budgeted. That was solely based on COVID. We weren't able to go anywhere, we weren't able to do training like we're normally able to do. Um, I do expect that number to be a lot closer to the actual budgeted amount now that we're underway. And then, I think that was pretty much it, under the police patrol. Police dispatch, so, um, I'll try to hit on this. I, I know you guys picked up on it and saw it, but you'll see that under the salaries, there's a thirty-seven percent increase there. So, just to kinda paint the picture real quick for everybody, so currently, we have four full-time dispatchers. That number includes hiring another dispatcher, so that would be five. We're currently dispatching for ten agencies. Two of those are obviously the police department and the fire department. And then Newport ambulance is basically three entities in one. So, we're having outside services for eight other agencies that are paying for their service. We're getting to a point now where it's the quality of service that we always try to sell to, like anybody that's gonna come on board. Yes, we dispatch, yes, we have a good setup, we have the best equipment, we're gonna give you the best service. We're at about eleven thousand calls a year right now with one dispatcher. They're busy. We've got some more stuff pushed down on us, not by choice, but by the state saying, look, we're no longer gonna take care of your warrant system for you. So, that falls back on our dispatchers. Uh, we're no longer gonna put the cases together when they go over the court. That falls back on our dispatchers. So, besides just answering phones and dispatching police officers, fire departments and EMS personnel, there's a lot more behind-the-scenes stuff that goes on and I've seen it in there. I've, I've had to go in there a few times when I'm in my office and help answer phone calls and stuff like that. Like, it gets busy and it can go from zero to a hundred in like no time. I have plugged in a part-time dispatcher, like at the times that I think are gonna be the busier times. It's really a shot at the dartboard, it's hard to tell. Um, but normally, from like eleven to nine, that's kind of our busy time for everything. And that has been a huge help relieving some of the stress in there. The state is, it's inevitable, like state dispatch is gonna dismantle at some point. I've been sitting in on some meetings recently and, uh, it's only a matter of time before all the dispatching gets pushed off to a regionalized location. It's still, they've been talking about this for a while. That's one of the reasons how we rolled out the system that we have downstairs with dispatch. So, we are capable to dispatch for every agency in Orleans County right now. We currently have ten. I've been trying to do like my own slow rollout process of, hey, we'll take on an agency, see how it goes. Take on an agency, see how it goes. And that's worked really well. Uh, I'm just afraid that we're gonna get to that point where they're like, okay, it's happening right now and I'm not prepared. So, I'm just trying to prepare, uh, for what's coming down the road. And I think it's a great opportunity for us to add those other thirteen agencies that we don't have dispatch for right now. So, that's kinda, that's how I, you know, came to that and tried to justify adding another dispatcher. And I have a list of stuff here. This is just one dispatcher. Just show it to you guys real quick. Yeah, so this is everybody. So, this is just one dispatcher that's been here for a while. He's a senior dispatcher. This is the duties that he does besides dispatching. Like, this goes to like all the, the IT, uh, the infrastructure there, um, just overseeing all the training, like there's a lot of other stuff that goes into it that he's responsible for. And by having this extra person will kind of alleviate and will still be able to provide that quality of service that I've told people that's what we do and that's what they expect when they're paying for any kind of service, so.
They're doing admin work, which frees up the officers to be out investigating crimes or patrols and things like that.
Correct, yeah. And I'm not saying like our officers are sitting in dispatch waiting to help out, that's not the case at all. They will help out if they're in the office and the phone rings a couple times, they'll pick it up and answer, take the call, pick that kind of stuff. But that's what I wanna try to avoid and I wanna try to help alleviate some of the stress in there. And to be honest with you, it's a recruitment retention thing that I'm looking at down the road for like, hey, you're, uh, for dispatchers, you know, like, hey, look, there's a chance within dispatch that you might be able to, you know, move up in lengths at some point. And, um, you know, so I'm kinda looking at it like that as well. But, um, I'm sure that was the, the big thing that stuck out to you. If I was looking at this budget, I'd see a thirty-seven percent and I would have been asking questions. So, I don't know if you guys have anything else with that part of it that you?
That thirty-seven percent is offset by revenue.
Correct, so, yeah, so to add the extra dispatcher, I think it was around seventy-two thousand and we're bringing in eighty-seven. So, it does offset it a little bit. And then, you know, like I said, these are the, these are the thirteen other agencies here that we aren't dispatching for. These are the ones here that we are. So, you know, this just gives us more opportunity and it's, DPS is gonna be no longer at some point and they're gonna have regionalized dispatch, like it's gonna happen.
There's another area that I think, is the Caledonian counties looking to increase, I think they're dispatching.
Yes, they are, yeah.
Because they see the writing on the wall, from what I can tell from what I've been reading. Um, and also, I look at the dispatch, well, I look at the state of Vermont, pretty much they pass the work on to us and it's an unfunded, unfunded, oh, you can do it now.
Yeah, it is. And, you know, it's, there's a lot more that goes into dispatching than just answering the phone. It, it would be so easy if they just answered the phone, the radio to just, like, there's so much more to it than that, there really is.
Chief, um, how many hours are training for a full-time officer?
Thirty.
Thirty?
Yeah.
I heard that went up to forty.
Uh, no, I, well, unless it hasn't, I haven't seen that memo, but it's, it's thirty. And, you know, and that just barely covers the basis of all the mandate, mandated trainings that we have to go to. We obviously do well above the thirty, you know?
Right. That went up five hours, we used to be twenty-five for full-time.
Yeah.
And they're doing the work with part-timers, so now.
Right.
You're, you're after.
And that was, and that was part of the reason for the increase in the training budget, but then COVID hit and like the world just stopped, so nobody was doing anything and we weren't sending anybody to training, so.
Like police officers, dispatchers have to go to like statewide trainings.
So, they do, it's a little different. Uh, we actually sent one of our dispatchers to like the actual dispatching class, like this is, it's like dispatch one-on-one essentially. And it was, it was a really good course, it was online, um, and it was dispatch one-on-one for fire, for EMS and for police. And, I mean, you can really slice into it if you want and you can, you can go just for fire and you can go just for EMS and you can go just for police and it really breaks it down for each one of those different agencies because dispatching for a fire is totally different than dispatching for a police. And same with EMS, those kinds of things. So, um, it was, it was really beneficial. I actually talked about it at our annual, or at the department meeting and brought it up and said that anybody else that was willing to go to this training, it's worth while and go, so. And I think as we progress and if we take on more agencies, then that's definitely gonna be one of those things that I will push for.
That's good.
Go ahead.
It's not actually related to the budget, it's kinda looking forward, is that okay? I just, as far as dispatching goes, if we're looking to hopefully take on more folks, that would go along with, we probably need more units? I mean, you probably have to have more than one or dispatcher on at a time, things like that?
Not, no, not necessarily. Yeah, so by adding a fifth dispatcher, that gives us that leeway of putting that person on during the busy time.
Okay, right. And doing admin work.
Right.
Yeah, okay. Do we have, and we have space?
Yes.
Okay.
Council members?
Yeah, so the space of equipment, just to refresh your memory, back in two thousand fifteen, two thousand sixteen, we got quite a grant.
Yeah.
That outfitted the office downstairs. So, there's two stations, I believe.
Yes, there's two dispatch posits are set up identical. You can sit in one and not build a difference from which one you were sitting in. And then that's the other thing that is unique in our situation is we are set up, we could have a flip of a switch right now and dispatch for all these agencies without doing anything, like the infrastructure's already in place. For a lot of these other agencies that might be interested in doing the regionalized dispatch, they have to come up with, one, a place to do it and then all the money for the infrastructure to do it. I've heard that the state might fund some of that, but who knows how long that funding's gonna last for it? Like, there's so many unknown questions, but I do know that dispatch through DPS is gonna come to an end at some point.
Anything from council members? Did you have something?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Using this infrastructure you have downstairs now, if there's some type of major incident, can you use your station dispatch for anybody in the state? I mean, not only the agencies you have a contract for, some of them on, you know, wherever.
Uh, well, no. No is the answer to that, but yes, we can dispatch for state police if we had to cover their channel. We can dispatch for them, so they cover a lot of the state. But anything outside of that? No, we don't have, we have to have separate radio channels set up for each agency and we don't have that outside of Orleans County.
Okay. Very good.
Is there any questions on the, any other part of the police?
Oh, we have, we have a couple. We have animal control and contracted services. This is zero for contracted. Animal, animal control is like, you reduce it to more, like, because you don't spend a whole lot.
Yeah, and I just tried to look at the, uh, the actuals from the other years to base it off from that.
Okay.
It's hard to tell, but it's really a, a best guess scenario.
Okay. Yes?
So, I had a few questions. If we go back to police income, the police income that's listed for, um, I believe, uh, two thousand, uh, twenty to twenty-one was three hundred and seventy-three thousand eight hundred and ninety-seven dollars coming into you. And I think for, for the previous year, it was four hundred forty-one thousand, I'm sorry, four hundred thousand forty-one one oh nine. And yet, what you're putting in for a, what, what someone is putting in for the proposed income for the next year, next, this budget year, is a hundred and sixty-seven thousand. So, if, if you estimate it instead closer to what you actually brought in, either the four hundred and forty-one thousand or the three hundred and seventy-three thousand, or, you know, you took ten percent off of that or twenty percent off of that, nonetheless, you'd still have a proposal of somewhere around, let's say, two hundred and fifty thousand, which would be a fair estimate of what you're going to be bringing in in police income. And that would cover that forty thousand dollar increase in our budget, more than cover the forty thousand. So, the people of Newport wouldn't be paying for it, but the police income that you actually get would be paying for it.
You cannot budget for grants.
Pardon?
We are not budgeting for grants, that's.
Is that the only difference between the four forty-one and the one sixty-seven?
You have actuals, which shows the years that we got grant money in. The, when you do a budget, you don't budget for grant money. That was a mistake the city made in the past. We used to estimate grants. Thank goodness it only came back to bite us once, where we didn't get a grant. But when you're doing budgeting, you don't budget for grant revenue. Now, that's what I consider voodoo economics. When you budget for grant revenue, you budget your expenses in hopes that you do get the grant because we will have those expenses, but you never budget for grant revenue unless you know. Like Travis, Travis added the resource officer because we know that's a contract and that's through the high school, that we do know. It's these other grants that, am I explaining it correctly?
That is absolutely spot on.
So, that is the difference between the actual and what you're proposing?
Yeah. I mean, if you look at twenty twenty-one budget, they budgeted sixty-five thousand two hundred per, and then the actuals were three hundred and seventy-three thousand.
Okay, another question. In your budget, uh, I think it's still in terms of the income, uh, for two years, there was a thirty thousand dollar police special investigation unit you got thirty thousand dollars for, but you're not proposing anything for that this year. Why is that?
I'm at the top of it.
Okay, yeah, right there. And that's, that's, that's the same exact thing, that falls under a grant that we received.
That's a grant as well?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep.
Just a minor thing, um, you've used, um, in office supplies about nine hundred dollars for office supplies in probably the last two years. Yet you budget for twenty-five hundred. Why not budget for the? Why not budget for a thousand dollars or twelve hundred dollars?
And, and again, like this is, like I said before, the supply and demand, the stuff that we're trying to get right now is ridiculous. Like, we can't just go to Walmart and buy bulk items of CDs or paper or thumb drives. And again, that goes back to the whole thing with the Odyssey stuff that we're doing now, not the court. Like, we're putting a case together for that shooting incident that happened over at Wendy's. I burned sixty-seven CDs, DVDs, the stack was this hot, like, there's stuff that I can't control in here, so I would rather have it be on the safe side than on the lower side.
Where does that money go that you don't spend?
It's the same process.
Gets reassigned to the restricted.
It's reassigned to?
Restricted.
I think those are my questions, thank you.
Anything else? Then that will be it for the process this evening.
Good, thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you, Travis.
Yes.
Thank you. Sorry, I just stopped sharing my screen. Tweaked a couple of things. Okay. The next item is proposed parade policy amendment. And you received a memo from the city manager?
Yes. I'm happy to say that I think that the events guidebook that we had a committee a couple of years ago, we did all that body of work, has worked very well. We've, uh, used the parade policy for a full year and we've made some observations, some recommendations for tweaks that we think will make it, uh, easier for the third-party organizer as well as the city. And I submitted to the council a memo as well as a red line strike act for consideration. Basically, uh, I, I wanted to remind folks what the city does in terms of parade support. The timeframe for, for requesting third-party parades starts January first and ends January thirtieth and then the first council meeting in February, just like the coin drop policy, council will be authorizing those. So, it's a good time to make some improvements that we, as the city have observed, will be, uh, beneficial and have a clear understanding for the parade organizers. So, uh, let's see, the upshot is that I did some research, um, I found a couple of different policies that I thought were very good. One of them was the national, we have the Vermont League of Cities and Towns, there's also a national league of cities and towns. They recommend, uh, twelve areas that should be considered in any parade. We have quite a few of them. We have quite a few of them, but there was a couple of tweaks that we were missing. In particular, our policy did not have a definition of a parade, so in looking at that model as well as another model, I found some language that pretty much delineates what a parade is. You'll see that on new paragraph number four, for purposes of this policy, a parade is defined as a well-advertised, organized and coordinated procession of parade participants such as floats, animals, people, marching bands, performers, et cetera, not to exceed one hour in duration. Parade organizers must have a registration process that accounts for the number of participants. This information will be provided to the city three days prior to the event so that appropriate safety measures can be planned. So that's one thing that we thought would be very important. The other thing that we wanted to do was to make sure that, uh, third-party organizers understood that the permit application and the events guidebook and the events permit would also be adhered to, and when the council made the original motion, I've got my notes right here, that council made sure to, um, approve it with the understanding that the parade organizers would need to follow the appropriate timeframes, and so it bears repeating in this particular version, even though it's mentioned up in the street closure section, I'm suggesting we bring that language down and include it in the parade section, which is basically all other elements of that, events guidebook and events permit must be adhered to by the event organizers, then I found additional language that, uh, takes care of any animals, we didn't have that, and as I said in my memo, we don't often have animals in parades, but when we do, it makes sense, in my humble opinion, to make sure that the animals are cared for, that, uh, the municipality is of note, is assured of the species, quantity and health of the animals, precautions shall be taken within parade lineups to ensure animals are well cared for and are not startled by other participants or noises, and parade organizers are responsible for animal debris removal. The last recommendation, of course, is just, should you choose to approve these amendments, then the language would be cleaned up in the final paragraph, which, um, basically was redundant, to say parade entries with animals must be cleaned up after, so I'm recommending removing that, and then I'm adding language in the last sentence, um, to failure to adhere to this policy may result in additional costs and possible future suspension of parade opportunities within the city of Newport. So I'd like to ask council to take a look at this and think about it, and, uh, if it sets well with the council, I would have it as a vote at the next meeting on the twentieth, so it'll be in place by the time January first comes around. The other thing that we'll do is when we get a parade application, we'll follow up with each applicant and say, you realize that this means, and we'll provide a copy of the events guidebook, the permit, and ask them to contact us about six weeks before the event because that's how long it takes to prepare ourselves, we have to schedule staff, usually on the weekend, and, um, we just want to make sure that these parades are, are safe and we're, we are in a good place to mobilize, particularly on the heels of what happened in Wisconsin a few weeks ago, not that that would happen here, but it is the standard of safety that we go for.
Probably didn't think it was gonna happen in Wisconsin either.
Well, it's with, uh, you know, humility and deference that we hope it'll never happen, but we also, that's on the back of our minds, and we're doing our plan, sitting around this table as department heads with a parade organizer.
I've got a question already.
Yeah.
Um, not to exceed one hour, so what if I have a parade that might be an hour and a half, or two hours?
Well...
Is that gonna be denied? I mean, we don't get them that often, or I have a parade that's only two seconds going down the road, or two minutes, you know, only like ten people or twenty people.
That's a...
I mean, you know, it...
That's a tough one because it says, uh, parade should not exceed one hour in duration.
But if you have some, you know, some event that might, I'm thinking back to the Centennial because that was a city event, but I'm thinking of something else, you could have some big event that might go more than an hour, that's the only thing that kind of stood out was that timeframe then.
I would hope...
I wouldn't wanna, you know, say no to somebody if it's a big event and it may last longer.
When the Centennial parade came, that was a really good lesson for us because we not only organized with all of the public service agencies in the area, we also organized with the agency of transportation because it was going to be so big and we had closed off the roads for so long, and that's really helpful to have that ample time to prepare for that kind of stuff, because I don't think the council would want to prohibit a parade with that level of wow factor from happening in Newport, I mean, I think we'd welcome that.
I think a good example of that would have been that Allstate parade that we canceled, they canceled because of this, uh, back when we were in a school, we had that thing, and that, that could have well over an hour because those bands start and play, they continue on, I don't think you want to be taking something like that for an hour, they just couldn't, that would have been a good example of the...
Right, because they were gonna come, but COVID canceled it, they were gonna have everybody in the state happen every year.
I think what we'll do then, if you want that, um, there's another sentence that I did not delete in paragraph two at the top of page two, so what I'll do is I'll mark that in red and let decide whether or not that should be amended too.
Okay.
I'll leave it to you guys.
This is something that kind of stuck out, if, that's a good example of the Allstate. That would have been, I forget how many band, well, I'm just about all the high school bands, I think. Yeah?
Yeah, I'd just like to say, having worked on the original, not the original original, but the last, the last one, whatever, um, I'm glad to see the, like, a process like this that, you know, it was, we did our best, tried to foresee everything, you know, what worked, what wouldn't work, and that it was used and learned from and, you know, it's come back for other consideration, I think that makes it a viable and, you know, usable document.
I think so too, that's the intent, it feels good, feels very good.
Yeah.
So I'll leave that.
So let everyone think on it, we'll have it on the December twentieth agenda.
That sounds good, thank you.
Moving on, um, we're on new business, I guess my only new business could be new old business, because I just want to commit, once again, commend REC, Public Works, FIRE, all the city departments that were involved with the event this past Saturday. It was a nice event, um, and it started snowing at the right time, it was a little chilly with the wind, but it was a nice event and then the Light of the Night Parade kind of topped it off with everything, and so it was a nice afternoon and I think all of the kids enjoyed Santa.
The goody bags.
What?
The goody bags.
The goody bags too, yes, so I just want to thank all everyone who came out on Saturday to make that a successful event.
Those guys, right there.
I, um, I had a previous commitment, so I couldn't come down, but I saw a friend of mine who, you know, is an adult, doesn't have any children, and she went, just, she thought it'd be a nice thing to do, and she, when I saw her, she just looked at me and she said, "It was magical," so, nice.
Nice.
Yep, and all the lights in the city are just beautiful.
Just beautiful, I'm so glad that you're pleased.
And now we have to put everything back together after the high winds.
Well, I think we've got a little bit more magic up our sleeve with a red sleigh and a white deer down here, which unfortunately you don't get to see lit up tonight, because I, there was one tree and the sled wasn't lit up tonight, I'm pretty sure it's because of the wind, but you'll see that in full force in the coming days and it would be another wow.
So I just wanted to bring that up, it's kind of new old business.
Very much appreciate that. Who made this and where did they all come from?
Our elves in the Public Works Department.
In Public Works, okay, I thought so.
And the REC department.
And REC.
Those two, all those three people right there are just...
So it was just all internal, but yeah.
Great, yeah.
Okay.
And, and the city landscaper, don't skip the words.
Yes, 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 yes.
Right. All right, that's what I had on new business, I'll move to Mr. Johnson.
Yeah, this is a really new business, I'm gonna bring it up anyway. Uh, I mean, Bob's done a fantastic job in the city department, lighting the city up. I don't know how many of you know that there's some music on Main Street? Uh, there hasn't been music on Main Street since SER music went out, I think Mac Center may have done it one year, somewhere in there, but it's been at least twenty-five years if not more. So Paul and I decided we were gonna put music on Main Street, the speakers carry a little bit better at night than they do in the daytime, but, uh, it's a good addition to go along with all the holiday stuff.
Yeah.
Uh, it's too bad somebody hadn't taken that over when SER went out, but it's back, so.
It's nice.
Paul did the technology and they screwed the speaker for the law. But that's something the city should look at in future years, you know, the speakers, SER had a big loudspeaker, you could hear it all the way up Main Street, I always carried it here and down to the Mac Center, but it's about it. But anyway, add into holiday spirit, we put some music on Main Street, it hasn't been there for at least twenty-five years.
I've heard good things, that people were really, you know...
Had a lot, how many lights have we hadn't fallen at?
I know, there's been a lot of people, I guess, on social media commenting on it and, and so...
As we knew, there's over two hundred of them there.
I think so. So, all right, any other new...
You know that addition to the holiday spirit.
That's nice.
Any other new business?
No.
Mr. Charvino? Mr. Wilson?
No.
That's all I had, anything?
No.
Anything with Sebastian?
No, just piggyback, my son absolutely loves being there and watching the lights turn on and Santa coming in and he wouldn't stop talking about it, it was amazing.
I'm so happy.
Anything new, Laura?
No, thank you, just to, uh, kind of glow in hearing the comments because that's really what we have hoped for, and I know the downtown organization has been inspirational with the merchants, and if you notice, they were open during the event on Saturday, which added to the...
Bye.
[inaudible].
Okay, that's okay, we'll move on. Old business, Mr. Johnson?
Uh, yeah, just one thing, I don't know, I don't think the city did the bands thing, did they?
Um, the tree, I believe...
The trees toppled over again.
Yeah, that's the rotary...
Nothing was lit over there when they came down.
Yeah, I, I think that's part of the wind too.
I don't know, someone needs to contact whoever your phone takes care of.
I think, I think, um, I don't remember who put that up, I think it's just gonna be secured by four ropes again.
Well, we'll have...
Have to secure it. I did mine at the house and the wind didn't take it.
So I got a tree blown over and I'm nailing that baby to the ground.
Okay, any other old business? Mr. Charvino, old business? Mr. Wilson?
No.
I don't have any, do you have any old business?
Yeah, just curious, um, how are we doing on recycling and getting that staffed? Uh, I have nothing to report, I think it's gonna be an internal appointment. So Reg is leaving the end of December?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we're gonna be ready?
Hope so. I think we're fully due.
So you don't feel the need to have any ads in the paper for anyone?
Not at this time, I think, I think you'll find that there will be continuity. Do you, yeah, honey, you can't really, yeah, I just like, okay.
Um, just kind of interesting looking back, um, anything more about the three-way stop that, that thing looked into more?
Uh, no, uh, we have talked about it at, um, staff meeting a couple of times and I think that Travis had made several attempts to reach out to the person that came in and brought that to our attention, do you remember Travis?
Yeah, I, I tried to stop by sometimes, it wasn't working, um, and we, we did talk about it at staff meeting, I'm not sure if it's, uh, if it's the appropriate thing for that intersection, um, so I think that's kind of, that's where we had left it at that point.
Can we just come back, can we have an update at the next meeting on the recycling, please?
Sure.
I'm just nervous and concerned that, you know, with Reg leaving at the end of the month, I just want to make sure it's a smooth transition down there and, and with the holidays, it adds extra work down there, um, and so if we could get an update at the next meeting, that would be, I would really appreciate it.
Sure, I will give you as much as I can, that is public information, I will.
Because I just want to be assured that it will be manned.
Mm-hmm, we're planning on it.
Okay. Any other old business?
Not for me, thank you.
Anyone, nope. Okay, the next meeting will be Monday, December twentieth at six thirty PM, and now we need a motion to adjourn at seven fifty-six PM.